Bald-headed, bow-legged, 85-year-old grin like a fox eating sauerkraut. I love you.
Quincy Jones is also celebrated for his activism and philanthropy. But the big takeaway was all of us trying to figure out how big of a grin a fox has when eating sauerkraut. There's no greater way to explore a new neighborhood than by going out for a stroll. That's exactly what the Great L.A. Walk embraces, a celebration of finding a new side of our city. We joined up with hundreds of Angelinos for the 16-mile trek.
We are going for the Great L.A. Walk.
I love the idea of going down in L.A., walking and meeting people and talking and looking around.
Guys, ready?
Yeah!
I started this 13 years ago to celebrate my 10th anniversary in Los Angeles. It's all about community. It's about reminding people that we live in the most diverse, multicultural, greatest city in the world. Celebrating the cultures, the differences, and the community that this city has. So, one of the things I like to remind people is when you're walking down the streets of Los Angeles, take your time. Why not celebrate by meeting people that we've never seen before, walking through neighborhoods that maybe you don't normally traverse, seeing stores, going to restaurants, experiencing Los Angeles as we should experience?
This is my first time, thanks to Jean, who brought us along.
I'm doing the Great Los Angeles Walk with my dad.
You can do as much or as little as you want. If you do it all the way, it's about 16 miles, but you can do as little as a mile if you want. So, this year, we're actually celebrating the life of Jonathan Gold, the Pulitzer Prize-winning food critic who passed away earlier this year, who really celebrated that message of exploring Los Angeles and getting to know this town and getting to know your fellow Angelino.
This year's walk was in honor of the late food critic and Pulitzer Prize winner Jonathan Gold, who passed away this summer after decades of celebrating our culinary diversity. This next segment is Shark Tank meets Cute Kids. Councilmember Gil Sedia hosted a children's business fair, where local kids show off their biz skills and get the opportunity to sell their handmade creations. Check it out.
The Children's Business Fair is basically an opportunity for the children to sell their products. Basically, it's like stuff that the kids created.
I'm selling my artwork and my paintings that I do. My favorite isn't here anymore. They already bought it. It actually makes me feel good because, I mean, I accomplished something.
I'm producing what is my talent. Right here, I have some canvases that I did with passion. I love to do art.
What the council member wants to do with this event is to encourage the kids to pursue entrepreneurship opportunities, encourage them to become entrepreneurs.
Today, we were here just kind of as moral support for the young entrepreneurs, that they're very talented, and there's people out there, myself included, that admire the arts.
I just supported my daughter when I see that it's gonna be an amazing event where kids can be entrepreneurs. I was like, "I wanna be there. I wanna support her."
A lot of times, people make money, and the first thing you do is pay all the bills, and then start spending money, so they're paying other people's bills, and they forget, "Did I put any money away for me?" And I want these young kids at an early age, as early as possible, to know how important it is to pay yourself first when you make money.
I give it its prize by its value of time, effort, and also the material that I use.
We get to learn, like, oh, this is how we have to do it if we wanna have a business.
This week, Councilmember Busciano partnered up with the Aquarium of the Pacific for his annual Free Night at the Museum and Toy Drive. Families join the council member for some amphibious fun for a good cause.
This is Council District 15's annual toy drive in partnership with the Aquarium of the Pacific. The aquarium gives us one day out of the year for a free community event here, and we've partnered with the aquarium to make this our annual toy drive. We are so blessed to have people from this entire region, actually, not only my district, but this entire region, to come and give a toy for those who need it the most. The toys tonight will be distributed to a number of nonprofits throughout Council District 15, from Watts to San Pedro, Wilmington, Harbor City, Harbor Gateway.
Well, here at the Aquarium of the Pacific, we're celebrating one of our district nights for District 15 over in San Pedro. Constituents of that district are able to come to the aquarium, and we'd love to be this community resource. Our mission is really important to connect with our local communities, our local district offices, and we're happy to do that tonight.
So, we're here with Johnny. Johnny, why are we here at the Aquarium of the Pacific?
To give toys, to give toys to people that need it.
So, on behalf of my team at Council District 15, wishing the city of Los Angeles a blessed and safe holiday season.
Did you catch Councilmember Busciano joining in as our latest L.A. This Week reporter? A tip of the hat to you, sir. Councilmember Paul Krikorian also joined in the spirit of the season with his 10th annual Holiday Food and Toy Drive. Rasha Goyle takes us to the kickoff event, where even Danger Man dropped in.
I think teddy bears, it's a symbol of love. If you give somebody a teddy bear, like, you wanna give lots of love, and when you have love, I think you have everything.
Well, definitely a lot of love here. Lucie Grejon, a local restaurant owner, is among the many donating to support Councilmember Paul Krikorian's annual holiday food and toy drive. It's her second year contributing, and she says it brings her so much joy.
It's about holiday, it's about love, about giving, and it's festive. I love it, a gift to receive.
Councilmember Krikorian started the drive 10 years ago. For the past five years, it's been held at the First Christian Church in North Hollywood.
We're privileged to work with them and very grateful to them for giving us this space. And sometimes, we need this much space because truckloads keep coming in, and carloads, and people open their trunks and bring in the food and bring in the toys, and it begins to become kind of emotionally overwhelming, if not overwhelming in space.
It's always important, whether it's this time or anytime, to be able to support and to care for members of our community that have less than those of us who are fortunate enough to have more than enough.
It's an opportunity to bring people together from the community to help those in need.
I think it is important so everyone, or anyone, doesn't feel left out. The ones that can afford to buy presents for their loved ones know that they're not left out, that there is support.
This event truly brings people together. Now, once the food and toys are collected, then they are further distributed. The food goes through the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry, which then distributes to several other congregations, and the toys are sent to organizations who then distribute to families and people in need.
Danger Man, the real-life urban superhero who promotes literacy, good health, and safety to children in urban communities, has been an avid supporter of the councilman.
Community is important, okay? And being how he's really for people and helping the homeless and trying to make sure our communities are safe, you know, it's very important.
And whether it's one item or many, every little bit helps, and it doesn't just stop at the holidays.
There are people who are going to be in need after the holiday season ends. So, anybody who ever wants to help homeless families, or people who are getting close to homelessness, or people who are victims of domestic violence, or kids who are struggling with illnesses, we always have ways to support those sorts of causes, and so anybody can call anytime, and we'll find a way to help.
And it's not too late to donate. If you are interested in supporting the drive, you can contact the councilman's office at Bad weather didn't stop the giving. Who says Angelinos won't go out when it rains? Councilmember Blumenfield celebrates the holidays in Reseda. Glassell Park gets an eco-friendly soccer field, and check out the sights and sounds at the El Pueblo Tree Lighting Ceremony. It's time for a city beat.
Councilmember Bob Blumenfield recently hosted his annual open house and toy drive at the CD3 offices in Reseda. Local residents turned out en masse with holiday gifts for the needy, children's toys, and practical supplies for the homeless. In addition to sharing some neighborly cheer, guests were treated to a new art exhibition from some of the area's finest.
And then after this is over, we've collected all supplies, we'll go and we'll distribute those supplies to folks who need them.
Glassell Park resident and city councilmember Mitch O'Farrell dedicated the opening of a new eco-friendly soccer field at Irving Middle School. The field had been unused since 2014, when the city red-tagged it due to extreme wear and tear. The new community field, completed for about half of the original budget estimate, features state-of-the-art synthetic turf and other green, eco-friendly amenities.
I hope that the mamas, the parents, the students can really enjoy this with their families.
And it was a countdown to happiness, as the El Pueblo Historical Monument held their annual tree lighting ceremony in downtown Los Angeles. A longstanding community event for Angelinos of all types, the ceremony featured live entertainment, refreshments, face painting, children's activities, and a fun visit with you-know-who. Happy holidays.
Okay, I'm really excited to share this one with you. Who doesn't want a selfie with Santa? Gil Reyes takes us to the latest Instagrammable pop-up, Falla Land.
Are you ready? Are you ready? All right. Welcome to Falla Land.
Get your smartphones out. Downtown L.A.'s newest pop-up gallery, Falla Land, is selfie central for holiday photos, inspiring the likelihood of likes from even the grinchiest of Instagram friends, says co-founder Chloe Summer.
Creating spaces where, when we enter them, we feel a bit lighter, we feel a bit happier.
So, where are we, Chloe? What is this?
So, we are entering the North Pole, and the North Pole is meant to transport you really to another realm.
Inside this Christmas village, everything in town is about the size of a child's playhouse, including the movie theater, now playing Miracle on Alameda Street. That's where Falla Land is located.
Mrs. Claus greets our guests in this room, and she often jokes she had a little... Hello, we were just talking about you.
Hi. It's Mrs. Claus.
Mrs. Claus, what happened here? What happened?
Oh, I left the popcorn machine out overnight, on overnight, and...
It looks great.
I made a lot of popcorn. Do you like popcorn?
I love popcorn.
Well, you could take some on your way home when you leave.
As you journey through here, if you're a child, you'll delight in the colors and the sounds and the scents, but as adults, sort of the humor throughout it all, have you been naughty or have you been nice?
A little bit of both.
So, well, you can't walk through the middle, so take your pick. Take your pick.
I'll go through the nice.
Okay. I'll follow you.
All right, let's see. Let's see what we got here. Walking through the nice here, and, oh, look at this.
This is the room where big-money dreams come true. Naughty or nice, everyone wins at Falla Land, but rather than Lotto balls picking today's winning numbers, those are Christmas balls you might hang on a tree. And speaking of trees, check out the brightly colored cannon bombs in the Falla Land forest. Deep in the woods, we search for an elusive Christmas creature.
And that's, that's the elf right there.
Well, that's not happening. Where is our hidden elf? All right, we have a hidden elf, hidden in the trees. So, he sort of gets out every night and hides in a different spot.
He's not a scary elf.
No. We don't have scary elves at Falla Land, come on.
On dasher, on dancer, onto our final room, where we meet Santa and hop aboard his sleigh.
When you're recording on your cellphone, it looks like you're flying over the world on Christmas Eve.
Exactly.
Yeah, that whole...
Exactly.
And this background here, is this Los Angeles?
This is Los Angeles.
Wow.
It's our beautiful city at night.
There's downtown.
Yeah.
Recognize that. It's a good little escape, escapism from reality.
And it's really important, it's important for everybody to have that moment of forgetting about whatever may be going on in the world or their own personal life, and just having a few moments to smile, whether it be with friends or their families, or, you know, even strangers, you know, the feeling in here is, there's a feeling, I'm sure you've felt it, of camaraderie, because everybody feels good.
The adults have just as much fun, and it's just, you know, a great time of year. Everybody's nice to each other, and we should all learn from that, and why not live like that all year long?
Take plenty of photos and let your heart be light at Falla Land, open every day except Mondays throughout the holiday season, at 787 South Alameda Street in downtown Los Angeles.
It's time to break out those ugly sweaters for a good cause. Get your pencils ready for some extreme character drawing, and visit a fashionable selfie wonderland. Here's some things to do.
December 19th is National Ugly Sweater Day, and we are celebrating with the Fourth Annual Ugly Sweater 5K and 10K. Now, this event is a virtual run, which means you can run for charity anytime during the month of December. This year's charity will be Feed My Starving Children. Get decked out and run the distance for a great cause. For more information on the Ugly Sweater 5K and 10K, visit virtualrunevents.com. Get your pens and styluses ready. It's an evening of extreme character drawing at the Nomen School of Visual Effects. Enjoy an evening of live models, fun music, free drinks, and drawing. The guest speakers for the event include famed reference model Rick Gallagher. Extreme Character Drawing is happening Friday, December 14th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Nomen School of Visual Effects, 1015 North Powanga Boulevard. For more information, visit gallerygirls.com. Strike a pose. The fashion team that brought you BeautyCon L.A. proudly presents BeautyCon Pop, the ultimate destination for self and selfie expression. Eight carefully curated galleries will take you on a fully immersive and super-shareable journey. Check out BeautyCon Pop, December 14th through the 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. 333 South La Cienega Boulevard. For more information, visit beautyconpop.com. And those are some things to do.
Our final story looks at a partnership between L.A. USD and the Special Olympics that's breaking down barriers for these local kids. Eno Marcos takes us to school games.
All this excitement is the culmination of six weeks of hard work and fun of an adaptive P program at L.A. schools for these kids with special needs, and these games are their time to shine in front of their parents and the world.
Let's go, Clinton, let's go!
It's a proud moment for both the parents and the children, as these special needs kids take to the field to play soccer, many for the first time in their lives.
You know, I'm such a crier, but for me to see my son, you know, participate in something like this is very emotional for me, because, you know, he doesn't have the ability to walk.
For me to see him do, you know, one or two things, for me, it's a big achievement.
The so-called school games are in their 12th year, a joint effort by the Special Olympics of Southern California and the L.A. Unified School District. This fall clinic is teaching soccer skills, while a spring clinic teaches track and field. A big part of getting the kids ready, the teachers.
We play ball, you know, in the classroom too, because Carol has upper body strength, so we try and work on that, and we build on that.
This is important for our kids. They get out and play sports, and they're active and healthy, and we want them to be active, just like the rest of the kids in the population, and have the same opportunities as them.
But what if you're in a wheelchair? Well, that's no excuse to sit out. You can always play hawker, a combination of soccer and hockey, adapted specially for the needs of kids in wheelchairs. The ball is super big and super soft.
I pushed it too hard.
Too hard? There's no such thing as too hard. What do you mean? It went out of bounds?
Yeah, it bounced.
The ball is larger, and so they could hit it, they could kick it, they could throw it. We also have adults on the fields where kids who need a little bit more hand-over-hand assistance. So, it's really an interesting game to really watch and see. It's really fun.
Here we go. Here we go. Even you-know-who takes a turn with the giant ball.
They were playing together, everybody together, that everybody was a team, and all the kids were enjoying having a smile on their faces. That was the most...
What did that do for you?
Oh, it feels so good.
Nice.
And when it's all over, prize ribbons for all, because everyone here is a winner.
This is a starting point to introduce Special Olympics to students and athletes.
What are your emotions right now?
Tired.
Just tired emotion?
Yeah, just tired.
Well, after all that running around, you're allowed. Who knows, there just might be a future Special Olympics athlete or two in the bunch.
That's gonna do it for this edition. I'm Umeima Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If we could have everyone please take a seat. Today is Wednesday, December 12th. We want to welcome you all to City Hall, this Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonnebuiscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, thirteen members in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Englander moves and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Englander moves and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Mr. President, given the upcoming recess, we'd counsel like all items today to go forth with, sir.
What do you recommend? I say yes.
I say yes too, sir.
Okay, then that's what we'll do. Everything will go forth with, let's run through the agenda.
There is a request to continue forty-seven A through C to January fifteen, twenty nineteen, sir.
So ordered.
Item number one is an item notice for a public hearing, and there are cards on this item.
Okay, then the next group of items?
Items two through thirty-nine are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold twenty-seven as well as thirty-four on the desk. Furthermore, item sixteen should be referred back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and item thirty-eight should be referred back to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee for further consideration. And finally, sir, committee reports for two through eleven, thirteen through fifteen, seventeen, twenty-six through thirty-two, thirty-four through thirty-seven, and thirty-nine have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration, sir.
Okay, so on the items that you requested be continued or referred, so ordered, and then I was informed that we should hold item five as well? Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items? And item six, let's hold that as well. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, continue.
Items forty through fifty are items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this council, do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, there are cards on all items, sir.
Okay, then let's continue.
Items fifty-one and fifty-two are items scheduled for closed session, would you... Would you like to hold them on the desk, sir?
Let me defer to Mr. Krikorian, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, items fifty-one and fifty-two are routine settlements that were considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, and I might note for the record, were personally voted upon by Councilmember Mitch Englander, Vice Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, and so on that basis, we would recommend that they be approved, and that can be done in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you very much, sir, so if you want to go over the items, Madam Clerk, and let's vote on those two items.
Item fifty-one, in the case entitled Freddie Torres versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend three hundred thousand in settlement. Item number fifty-two, in the case entitled Jeffrey Martin versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend one point five million in settlement.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where?
On the continuation agenda, items fifty-seven through sixty-seven are items which public hearings have been held. Item sixty-seven, the committee report for that one has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration, sir.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, continue.
That brings council to presentations, items called special or general public comment, sir.
Let me call up Sean Murphy. Please come forward, Mr. Murphy, and then Mr. Previn, I'll be calling you next. Mr. Murphy, you have item six, forty, forty-one, A through C, and then all the way to... Item fifty, go ahead.
Item, okay, item fifty, I'm supporting. Item forty-one, I'm supporting. General public comment.
Give him his one minute.
I want to wish my fans a happy holidays. My Christmas concert is Saturday at St. Charles Barmejo. You know what, St. Charles will be glad to see this year go, it has not been a good year for us. We lost our Pat, we lost our Monsignor Gallagher, and we had a break-in over the summer, they'll be glad to see this year go.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to, Mr., as Mr. Previn begins to make his way, Mr. O'Farrell for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Back in the summer of two thousand and six, I had the great pleasure and privilege and honor of traveling to Beirut with my predecessor, then-Council President Eric Garcetti, as we signed the Beirut Sister City Agreement with the City of Los Angeles. Also, Deniz Zeyn of Lebanese Heritage joined us, and here we are, eleven and a half years later, and the delegation was led by our friend Ferris Wehbi and his entire crew here, including Dr. Nacheff who was here. And Dr. Joanna Nacheff, she formed a group of carolers that she directs, and they offered their talents for us this morning in the rotunda. They are a high caliber group of vocalists and instrumentalists, offering a myriad of presentations with music of all eras and styles, from opera to musical theater, from Motown to rhythm and blues. Members of this group have appeared on American Idol, America's Got Talent, The X Factor, The Voice, House of Blues, Carnegie Hall concerts, and supported by Andrea Bocelli at the MGM Show in two thousand and eight. So, here to just hum a bar or two, the Dr. Joanna Medawar Nacheff singers to provide some cross-cultural holiday cheer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all so very much. Okay, where is Mr. Previn? Eric Previn? Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, you have item six, items forty through... Fifty-six, no, forty through fifty, and then you have fifty-six, and you have general public comment.
Is it a crime for mere advocacy not to distinguish from the laws of lawlessness as action, but mere words to punish mere advocacy? To accomplish a political reform to gain consideration of an action of environmental disaster called plum? The statute for advocacy to monitor free speech to a limit of sixty seconds is unconstitutional, and I challenge the constitutionality of the United States of America versus the City of Los Angeles for discrimination on item seventeen dash one zero five-three. For the record, fuck you Eric Garcetti. Then, in support of my advocacy, as I mentioned, there is no crime, but to thank Jeffrey Martin and Freddie Torres for the lump sum of money that was awarded to you, congratulations, and I hope you're the best in your future lawsuits against the City of Los Angeles. For mere words to punish mere advocacy is a bitch. Then I turn to the final maps, which I don't give a fuck about at this moment, and we'll pass them up since I have forty through so forth. What is animal welfare? What is the implementation and benchmarks of animal welfare? I'm trying to figure it out, I in toto. Because yesterday's event, Herb said, "I'm endangering my service dog."
No, you gotta get on the item, you get on the item, Mr. Herman. Be on the item.
Hiring goals for the targeted local hiring is not to acquire the slaughter of Armando Herman and his service dog.
Mr. Herman, you're not, you gotta stay on topic, let's give him his one minute for general public comment, he's been warned, now you can talk about basically what you want to talk about.
Well, it's mere advocacy, folks, mere advocacy. Why Jewish doctors make a killing of abortions? Would you want the fucking Baptists in the Klan with Justin Bieber, Wesson, and college degrees doing abortions? Do you want Herb Wesson for the second savacha or kavanza? Whatever fucking Hebrew hot dog you want to eat? Well, I'm talking about what Monica and Eric Garcetti were doing up in the valley. Supporting homelessness. How much longer will we support homelessness? Well, you're looking at homelessness, I will be here to the fucking day I die seeing Herman, Jason, Wesson's son go to jail for mail fraud and abuse of this council floor for recognition of CD-ten fuck.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Herman, Mr. Previn? If you could put Mr. Previn on my screen? Okay, Mr. Previn, items forty-two, forty-five, forty-six. Now, you also have two other items in the special meeting, and I'll call you back for those. So you have those three items now, and then your general public comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, exactly, let's all, let's all listen to Mr. Previn. I appreciate that, and I don't want to take too much time, I know we've got a robustico presentation today. There is a lot of excitement in the room for a great tenure that is coming to an end. Now, Brickstar, Brickstar LLC are doing an outstanding job. I think they're running the Union Bank offices that the Office of Finance is moving into. I just didn't understand why it was tagged as a CD-12 item since it's within one mile of City Hall. But, we could probably figure that out at some other point. The thing about the LAPD, and I know we got the chief and the other chief here today, and I'm happy about that.
So, Mr. Previn, you're on items forty-two, forty-five, and forty-six, that's not any of those items?
Well, no, I didn't say that, I'm just saying that they're here to talk about those items.
Get on the items, Mr. Previn, please.
Okay, well, the computer, okay, let's be clear, the technology spend is definitely on the agenda, and in several spots. The technology spend is definitely on the agenda, and in several spots, the FSR, the Technology Spend Augmentation Plan that Englander is shepherding for the LAPD.
Mr. Previn, you're still not on topic.
Let me, then give me a minute. There are a lot of items on your agenda. I'll find one that is actually, you know, is Sprouts Farmer's Market in CD10?
Mr. Previn, you signed up for the items. It's items 42, 45, and 46.
Okay, Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, this, Mr. Previn, we're going to give you your general public comment, your one minute on that, and you can speak to whatever you want, for whatever reason you don't want to cooperate.
No, I do want to cooperate. I want my time, and I'm objecting right here. I get five minutes on item nine because we did a CIS.
No, Mr. Previn, it's already, it's already been voted on.
Don't interrupt me during my general. I understand, that's why I was, I'm sorry, I'm a little out of breath. I was talking with Mike Fuhr as I went to his office, explaining that it's a self-deal, and that you guys should all virtually be recused because you've all taken hundreds of thousands of matching funds, and Englander is going to, and his group's all going to get that in CD12. And we've just finished, and it's on the agenda today, the $97 million feasibility gap program for the AEG, which is not where Tim Lewicki works now, where Englander's going. He used to work there. So it's all very close and very murky, and Weezer is concerned, Price could care less because it's in his district, and just wave that thing through. And everybody wants hotel rooms at the JW Marriott. Page one of the New York Times, though, is the Marriott data breach problem. So hopefully that is a big Chinese issue there, and I love the, I don't know what happened there, but it's on the cover of the paper. So I hope we could slow everything down, but mainly the matching fund program, because it is a egregious heist, and we have been...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's get Ms. Ramirez, Antonio Ramirez. You have two minutes, items, in fact, no, Ms. Ramirez, you only have your general public comment. Your other comment is in the special meeting. So you have one minute now, and then I'll call you later when we are in the special meeting. So you have your one minute for general public comment now.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the elite, satanic, Luciferian, fucking fake and real Jews have made a secret unholy alliance with the following animals and vultures. They made it with a fucking chungo Latino wetbacks and gangbangers who are nosy pigs, thieves, and jealous pussies. Then they made it with the secret, with the white trash junkies, and then they made it with the Skid Row niggers, the NAACP, Antifa, Black Lives Matter, all these niggers, to gang stalk law-abiding citizens and to shut us up. We've been attacked, beaten, robbed, and harassed endlessly, night and day. We're demanding that the city take action and protect not only women, but all of us who are homeless, who are being attacked by these criminal vultures who harass us, and they're ordered by Garcetti, by the fucking Jew Michael, Michael Fuhr and Garcetti, and all the other motherfuckers who harass us, rob us, attack us. Crimes against women, this has to stop! God...
Okay, thank you, your time has expired. Can I have, Ms. Ramirez, you are interrupting the meeting now. Yes, good to see you again. It's been ages.
Good to see you too. Good morning, council members. I'm Rabia San with Esperanza Community Housing, and a proud member of the Unidad Coalition. I'm here with our coalition partners today, including Sage and Lafla, if you could please stand. And we're just here to say thank you so much for passing the South and Southeast LA Community Plan Implementation Relay today. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk, that concludes, that ends public comment, multi, and just general public comment. So that is out of the way, and we can move forward from this point. Okay, now we're going to quickly go through the items. We'll go to item one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now we'll do, we'll vote on items five and six. Now we hold item five, we'll vote on item six. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. We'll now vote on items 40 through 50. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Madam President and members, I'm trying to figure out exactly how to describe what we're about to do. We're getting ready to say best wishes to an individual who has been a very dear friend of this council, an individual that's been in this building for quite a while, an individual that we want to succeed, and we wish him all of the best as he begins this next chapter in his life. And I am truly saddened because when he leaves, I won't be able to debate if I'm the smallest or the shortest guy on the council anymore. Without a doubt, I will, I will hold that title. But ladies and gentlemen, let's start off, I'm going to ask my dear friend, the president pro tem of this council, to come up and stand next to me. Let's give Mitch Englander a round of applause. If his family could come, get around us. You know, I'm only going to say one serious thing, and then I'm going to kind of be the emcee and call up various speakers or what have you. But it's no secret that Mitch is the one Republican on this council. And sometimes, there are things that we do that are challenging for Mitch to do because of philosophical differences. But whenever he needed to lead, whenever he needed to set an example for this council, is a perfect example of an individual that put party politics aside and just flat-out would do his job. I will personally miss him because not only is he a friend, but he's somebody that I counted on and would count on on a regular basis, and somebody that has never refused a request that I've made because he put the people of this great city first. And today is his last official day as a voting member of this council. And so what I would like to do, and Madam President, we're not going to have interruptions from the audience today, not on this presentation, so they're all officially being warned, any disruption, they will be immediately removed from these chambers. Because what we want to do is say thank you to a friend and wish him well in his future. So what I'd like to do is call up some individuals who fortunately or unfortunately had the, fortunately or unfort, wait a minute, what is up with the gold suits?
It's Mitch's favorite color.
I feel like I'm at a sporting event. Where's my seats, you know, but, yeah, it's section 20, we're section 24. But anyway, what I'd like to do to start this off is to bring up an individual that we all know that needs no introduction, and that would be our great Chief of Police, Mike Moore.
Well, members, good morning, and it is a pleasure to be here for two reasons. One is to congratulate, two is to verify. So, in the famous, I think it was a Republican who said, "Trust but verify." But, but no, we are here, I'm here on behalf of the men and women of LAPD to wish this man our best wishes and to say thank you. Councilman Englander, as both in working as a staffer and as a chief of staff for then Councilman Smith, and now in these last years as a councilman for the northwest part of the San Francisco Valley, has also been a councilman, as Council President Wesson has indicated, for the City of Los Angeles. And during this time, he has grown and matured, I will say matured, as a reserve, an active line reserve, for the men and women who he's worked alongside as he's gone out to protect the citizens of Los Angeles. My first encounter with Mitch Englander goes back some, more than a decade plus, and when I was looking at a scene, and I was seeing disaster in front of me, and then I looked down, and there was Mitch. And he was talking with me, and I did, I knew that noise was coming from someplace, but I just couldn't figure out where that was. But while his stature was one that required an adjustment of my gaze, his ambition about the safety of Los Angeles and the safety of our men and women to have the equipment, the training, the resources that they needed, has been unwavering. And so as he moves on to this next chapter, I wish him and Janie and their family nothing but the best. I know that we have not heard the last of this man and his impact on public safety here in Los Angeles, and as he enters this work, I want him to know that on behalf of a grateful department, that his work, his dedication, his debate has made us a better department, and has structured us and situated us in a fashion for success as we come, as we move forward into the next decade. So God bless you, Mitch, and where are you? Thank you.
See, I don't have anybody, I won't have anybody to share all the short jokes with anymore, so it's going to all be on me. So I'm going to get some lifts for the holiday. Anyway, now I'd like to bring to the podium our great Fire Chief, Chief Terasas. Come on up, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Madam President, council members, it's an honor to be here. My relationship with the councilmen started about five years ago, and then we were facing a lot of challenges. I can report to you today that because of councilmember Englander's unwavering support, his regular meetings, his constant guidance, we are better today. He is the father of Fire Stat. You can ask him that. I like to claim the title of the godfather of Fire Stat. Fire Stat has now become normalized within the Fire Department, and other fire departments are looking at we do so they can become better. The other thing I think about when I think about the councilman is his passion for community paramedicine. Because of his support, we have multiple advanced provider response units. So we're able to treat and release on scene 55% of the time. Beyond those professional things, I've enjoyed a personal relationship with him. We're both fellow Fire Hogs, which is the LEFD Motorcycle Group. We've gone on rides together. We've flown the brush together in the helicopters to assess the threat to the city, and he continually amazes me with his passion for public service. So one of the things I always tell our people is that excellence occurs when an individual recognizes an opportunity and pursues it with a passion. I can safely say that Councilmember Englander has that passion for public service, and because of that, he has achieved excellence for the Los Angeles Fire Department, as well as for the people of Los Angeles. Congratulations, councilman, we're very proud of you.
Now, if we could get the CAO, the COO from DWP, Marty Adams.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here to recognize Mitch Englander on his last day in council. You may wonder what DWP and Mitch Englander or CD12 in general have in common, since I don't know that they've ever voted for one of our rate increases. But it turns out we own quite a bit of property in the council district, and it has a lot of challenges and resulting a lot of relationships. I met Mitch about 12 years ago when he was chief of staff for Councilman Smith, at a time when my boss at the time made a promise to his boss at the time, something, a project out at Chatsworth Reservoir that I think we're still working on, so, but in good city spirit. But we've had a lot of great engagements over the years. I think recently with Chief Terasas, we worked on getting a heli spot at Chatsworth Reservoir, which was instrumental in the Woolsey Fire, in making sure that that fire didn't get into the City of LA. And Mitch took on issues that were challenging and things that were maybe unpopular at the time, but proved to be very important down the road. I remember standing side by side with him in front of a mob of 200 angry homeowners out at Chatsworth about the Ecology Pond, for him to address them, and then, of course, I found the next hour that he was standing in back and left me by myself in front. But it was okay. Mitch helped us take on the Metropolitan Water District when we moved some ball fields that were serving about 2,000 families for Little League and soccer, and helped us to keep those fields where they were and work on a better partnership out at the Van Orme property. And he was there when we put the shade balls, the final shade balls, on LA Reservoir, and the city's probably biggest media venture that we've ever had. And of course, followed shortly about a year later with the proposal to replace those with floating solar cover out there. I will say that when Mitch said he was leaving city service and taking a job, the only fear we had was that he was working for a floating solar company. So we were greatly relieved to hear that that was not the situation. Over the course of his career, Mitch had brought us a lot of problems, challenges, and potential solutions, mostly problems, but we've had a tremendous working relationship and a great friendship. And Department of Water and Power will miss him, will miss what he's meant to us in our endeavors and the facilities that we have to maintain and the insight that he's brought to us, and I will personally miss him as a close friend on the council. So Mitch, good luck and best wishes in the future.
Good job, Marty. Okay, now from Building and Safety, our great general manager, Frank Bush. Give him a round of applause.
Good morning, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to say a few words about Councilman Englander. I first met him when he was the chief of staff, and he really expressed a lot of support for the Department of Building and Safety, and he has done the same for the department since he became the council member. He's always amazed me at his real concern for the district itself. One of the toughest jobs in the city, I'll say it here today, is working as a code enforcement inspector for the Department of Building and Safety, and getting in the middle of all the neighbor disputes and all the other issues in there. But the councilman really took it to heart and asked, and actually came out and did ride-alongs and went and got involved in some task force to really find out what's going on in the city. So in the Department of Building and Safety, we really appreciate his support that he's given us all of these years. We're going to miss him. And one thing, I think on a personal note, I really have to say that his involvement in getting the Devonshire LAPD Powell's Building put together and in operation all these years, I know it was a lot of work, and you had a lot to do with that, a lot of your effort, and a lot of other things within the community. So I appreciate all you've done for me personally, and encouragement, you know, on that note, and from the women and men at the Department of Building and Safety, we appreciate it. We wish you well. and men in the Department of Building and Safety, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank, thank you very much. Now, if we could get Enrique Salvador from Sanitation. Enrique, come on up, give Enrique a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam President, thank you, I am the trash guy. I had the great opportunity to have a great deal of bonding time with Councilmember Englander on a excursion that we came to call the Trash Tour. That was nearly 15 years ago, and he was the same height, but much younger, of course. It was led by then-Councilmember Smith, great to see you, Councilmember, Nicole, and Mitch. 10 years, I should say 10 days on tour, looking at solid waste facilities. You can imagine what that taught me about Mitch and his dedication to public service. I also came to appreciate what it means to be the councilmember of a district that has a landfill in it. I mean, that's true, obviously, of Councilmember Smith, Mitch, and anyone who is in that district, it's true of those like Nuri, who had many landfills in her district. So I gained an incredible appreciation of what it means for the city to be on a course to move away from landfilling. We will make this city landfill-free. Mitch had everything to do, a lot to do, with setting us on that course. He built the platform for what has become our zero-waste platform, along with Councilmember Smith and now the leadership in the council. It was in those 10 days that I had the most opportunity to know Mitch as the person, to know Mitch as a colleague, to know Mitch as a friend. So I want to thank him on behalf of the Department of LA Sanitation and the Environment, having him to thank for setting us on a aggressive determination to move this city away from landfilling. Thank you so much, Mitch, and thank you for all what you've done for the city.
And now the last speaker before members are afforded the opportunity to chat. We all know how important our, you know, chief deputies or chief of staffs are to us, their right hand, our left hand, our, you know, sometimes our brain, our heart and our soul. So the chief of staff from the Great 12th District, Nicole Burnson.
Thank you, please pardon me my notes. Mitch will tell you that he cut his political teeth on the Valley's secession campaign. That move to succeed was motivated by anger with the downtown establishment, and two issues in particular became symbolic of that perceived neglect. The Northridge Pool, damaged in the Northridge earthquake and out of commission for many years, and the Sunshine Canyon landfill, which was the recipient of the entire city's trash, and inspired the rallying cries of "Stop Dumping on the Valley." The Valley didn't succeed, and Mitch went on to run Greg Smith's successful race for city council, and came to work in City Hall as Greg's chief of staff. Together, they rebuilt the Northridge Pool, they obtained a closure date for that landfill, they built a state-of-the-art Devonshire PALS Center for at-risk youth, wrote and passed the Renew LA Plan to bring commercial and multifamily recycling to the entire city, and extract the energy value from the trash that remained. They created the first Movies Under the Stars series that has been replicated citywide, and stopped the Las Lomas development, which would have dropped 6,000 new homes at the confluence of three freeways, without a thought of the additional traffic or environmental impact. They expanded Bee Canyon Park and built Rinaldi Park and Eliso Canyon Park, and acquired the Oakbridge Estate, the former Jack Okie House, and saved its vast property from development. They collaborated on DWP reform that gave us the Ratepayer Advocate and the Office of Public Accountability. In his spare time, Mitch graduated from the Los Angeles Police Academy, became a Reserve LAPD officer, and continues his service to this day in the Fugitive Warrants Detail. When Mitch won the election to succeed Greg Smith in 2011, he was elected outright in the primary. His goals were simple: provide essential city services, preserve the unique character of the 12th District, ensure the safety and livability of our communities, while providing exemplary customer service to our constituents. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, he leveraged his position on the Budget and Finance Committee to make sure that our first responders always had the equipment and staff necessary to ensure their safety and ours. He created Fire Stat LA, using data to reduce ambulance response times. He created the Advanced Provider Response Unit to reduce monopolization of paramedic resources by so-called super-users while providing onsite treatment. He championed on-officer body cameras for LAPD to enhance their transparency, and he tackled dangerous street racing head-on. And when the catastrophic Eliso Canyon gas leak released 100,000 tons, metric tons, of methane into the air in Porter Ranch over a four-month period, he led the relocation and recovery efforts, holding SoCal gas responsible for the families that were sickened and displaced. Mitch believes fundamentally that parks are the cornerstone of our communities, and has had the great joy of opening several new ones, including the beautiful new Oakbridge Estate Park, and has broken ground on a new 50-acre park in Porter Ranch, the future Bloom Park named in tribute to his late mother and sister. When regulators informed Wrencken Parks in 2007 that Chatsworth Park South was contaminated with lead shot and PAH, he made a very difficult decision to close that park, to protect the community from potential health dangers. It took eight years to negotiate a cleanup with the regulators and reopen that park, and it cost $11 million, and was an endeavor that many said would never be completed, but today, that park is a jewel of the Chatsworth community. Mitch has leveraged partnerships with local businesses and nonprofits to maximize the benefits to our community like no one I have ever seen. His Making Movies That Matter Youth Film Festival has paired thousands of San Fernando Valley elementary, middle, and high school students with professional filmmaking mentors to write, direct, star in, and edit their own films, and enter them into competition, all using iPhones and technology packages provided by Apple. His E-12 Summer Internship Program has educated and trained hundreds of local high school students to become the future leaders in their communities, and in turn, to share their communication and organizing skills with their peers. He has supported the business community and job creation by eliminating the gross receipts tax on new car dealers, aligning business tax filing deadlines, and striving to update and maintain infrastructure. And he has fought to maintain the industrial property in his district from encroachment of other uses, because he understands the importance of these properties for job creation. His Innovate 1-8 is the first ever such zone with its own overlay in Zemus. And in an unprecedented time in our city's history, with so many of our population experiencing homelessness, Mitch has used his own experience with homelessness to drive his relentless mission to assist people in getting into housing while reducing the negative effects of homelessness on our neighborhoods. These two goals are the cornerstones of his highly-successful Neighborhoods First Program. At a time when many communities have outright rejected the construction of shelters, Mitch helped to raise the money to build the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission's 90-bed family shelter in Northridge. He has been awarded grants for innovative partnerships like Clean Streets Clean Starts, which pairs homeless volunteers with local beautification teams to clean their communities while they access services, grow in their confidence, and regain their dignity. Mitch has also raised money to buy a mobile shower unit that services most of the San Fernando Valley. He recently funded a pilot for a Get Help app, which enables any user to be a subject expert at assisting those in need of shelter, food, sanitation, or mental health services. In addition to all these things, he has funded overtime to LAPD Hope Teams, sanitation cleanup crews, and has hired a rapid-response team of LAPD cadets to handle calls for service from constituents. Mitch has set the example for philanthropy, having raised millions of dollars for the American Diabetes Association, Devonshire PALS, and the North Valley YMCA, among so many others. And finally, I want to say on behalf of the staff that we appreciate the opportunities you've given us, the knowledge you've shared with us, and the example you've set for us of vision and leadership. And you may leave this horseshoe, but you will always be with us, and the CD-12 family, and the community, always.
Thank you, Mr. President, we have a few members on the queue, Mr. Buscaino.
Nicole, thank you for that adjourning motion.
Nicole, give us back our Kleenex.
May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, signatures for all. Everyone. Fourth whip, double fourth whip. We got the vote on that, Ms. Martine? Okay, great.
Urgent, fourth whip.
Urgent, urgent. Brother Mitch, I have really grown to love you in the last six years since I've been here. You've taken me under your wing, albeit like this, we have chicken wings. We've often, in the last six years, have seen eye to eye, well, maybe not, but yes, on some issues, and quite frankly, that's what I'm gonna miss about you, is your dry sense of humor, and your ability to make us be human, and laugh a little bit around this horseshoe, because it's often needed, and do so respectfully, of course. But thank God we got Bob Blumenfield here to carry on that tradition. Like both of our chiefs have said, I've seen you champion public safety issues in our city, and as you remind us, that is the core function of city government. With your departure, just know that we'll all continue to carry that for you, because it's so important for us on public safety issues, and thank you, you can, thank you for that guilt, you can say that, I'm not gonna say it. But in Public Safety Committee, I'm gonna miss your monologues on each of the items to the point where other members weren't able to speak, because we ran out of time. I know you have led significant legislative efforts and incredible wins, not only for your city, for your district, but also for your district as well, but you did suffer an economic blow to the pornography industry when you lost that, as evidenced, you reminded me of the paper, the newspaper clipping that you shared with me yesterday, but you bounced back, you bounced back, with the Innovate 818 initiative to bring innovation to your district as an innovation hub. I'm happy that, you know, it's still stuck in plum as of today, but know that we will carry that on and ensure that we will attract innovation to your district, but also save our streets, LA. I saw Mitch's leadership in our SOS LA, and it's reminded us by that huge, thick booklet that we put together after a year and a half in the making, and daily, almost daily calls, weekly calls with all city staff, and that was symbolic of your leadership on a key issue that went nowhere. As well as your incredible youth development, and your love for our youth and our city, Mitch, of course, as indicated by the PALS in your district, and the youth film, you always brought these kids who really embraced the film industry, and just know that we will carry on that legacy as well on youth development. You clearly led with compassion and passion, and I will miss your presence here on the city council, and to your family, to Jane, to Lindsay and Lauren, thank you for sharing him with us, but also condolences, because he's gonna spend a lot more time with you. But he, let me tell you, to Jane, Lindsay, and Lauren, he would drop everything for you. We would be in the middle of committee, or middle of meetings, or conference calls, but when that moment came, when you called him, he would drop it. He would say, "Hold on, my family's calling." And as much as I respect you, Mitch, as a leader, I respect you more as being a loving husband and father, and for that, we will not forget. So congratulations, I know you're going to the entertainment business, which will be nothing different, because you've been entertaining audiences here on the council chambers for many years, but nonetheless, I love you, God bless you, and I know the future will continue to be bright for you, and as Frank Sinatra said, "I did it my way, you did it your way," and we're gonna miss you, brother, love you.
Thank you, Madam President. I know Mr. Wesson and I will have to think about this, whether we have to disband the Short Caucus now that we'll have difficulty getting a quorum.
It will be challenging.
Now, I also have a lot of respect for Mitch and the fact that he's been very bipartisan, has just always been a problem solver in the city, and that once got me into hot water, because I knew Mitch, I knew he was a great guy, I knew he was always working on good stuff, and I'm an elected member of the LA County Democratic Party Board, and so if you endorse a non-Democrat, you get thrown off. Well, I never thought about Mitch's party, so when he first ran, I endorsed him, and that was not well-received. Fortunately, I was able to talk my way out of it and say I didn't know. But I think it's a fair statement, and it was, it was a great thing, one of the best things about my coming from the legislature to the city council was the fact that nobody thought about whether they were Republicans or Democrats, everybody just tried to do their best to solve the problems of the city, and that has absolutely been true for you, and I greatly appreciate it. I noticed, I actually thought you were leaving us probably before anybody else, when I noticed you stopped wearing ties, and I commend you for wearing one today, just to recognize your last day. Well, I have a good story, but I should save it for last, maybe. I will say that you have been appropriately rude, obnoxious, and abrasive in dealing with some of our gadflies that come here to disrupt our meetings, and I know they would join me in saying, "You should chair the rest of the meeting so you have a chance to throw them all out one last time." Now, my most memorable moment with you has to be the American Diabetes Association roast, and for those of you who have attended these, they are notorious for the most vile and obnoxious and off-color jokes that you could find anywhere. And when they asked to honor me, my wife asked for a commitment that there would be no, not a word said that would be vile in that way, and they committed to that, Mitch committed to that, and so we had the event. I'm known for being an animal person, loving cats, so they had the cast of cats, and they performed, it was great, and then they asked me to step into a cat outfit, and they did not tell me that those nice stiff tails that they had, that this outfit would be put on backwards. And so, for those of you who weren't there, this was as embarrassing a moment as I've had in my entire life.
Well, Paul, Paul, do you have the suit?
I did not know what, I did not know what to do with that tail. I did not know what to do with that tail. I held it for a minute to try and hide it, that did not help. And I can only say if Gail and I didn't, didn't think of you as a brother, she would have not resumed speaking to you after six months that she waited.
I sent her flowers the next day.
So despite that great moment, I love you as a brother, you've been an incredible colleague. I'm very sorry to see you go, so absolutely keep in touch and anything I can do, I will always be there for you.
Mr. Corretts, I thought you brought the suit this morning.
I brought the photo.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Mitchell Englander, this day could not come soon enough. I got to say, there's probably no other major American city that has even one Mitch on the City Council. And I get on this council, I found, I found out there's already one on the council and I'm the second one. So no more of that. You, you occupy a very, very special place around this horseshoe and in committee for that matter. For everyone else, when you stand up and you begin talking about an issue that you're about to vote on, you have a pretty clear sense of the way you're going to vote. But whenever Mitchell stands up to say anything or is chairing a committee and we're about to vote on something, whatever he says has no indication whatsoever of how he's going to vote. In fact, sometimes he'll make the case for something and then sit down and vote the opposite of what he says. Now, no one else really does that and so we will, we will miss you. I have been trying to figure out for five and a half years what in the hell you ever mean about anything. And we're, we're starting to learn. But one thing I know is that I've been on this council for five and a half years and you really helped show the ropes when I was a new council member and I think you played that role for many of us and I appreciate that. I will miss giving you a hard time at every single opportunity that I have, but if you're at the roast this coming March, look out because I will plan for that one. And if you even so much as try to put on the same kind of outfit that you put on Paul Corretts some years ago, don't even go there because it will not work for you at all. I've got to say that as traumatic as that incident was for all of us, traumatic, right? It's like you can't unsee that sort of thing. I have never laughed as hard continuously in my whole life, all of it at Mr. Corretts' expense. But I got to say, your time is coming and I think it just started with what Joe stood up and, and started. So you've never accepted being roasted, but I think you can expect some good-natured ribbing from now on anytime any of us see you. So thanks for all your service. You've been a great council member representing the 12th District very well. Your constituents, I think that they, they validate that every day. And with the words that Nicole made, I think that gives a sense of your accomplishments and how well you've served that district. So thank you, my friend and my Mitchell from another mother. I will miss you on this council and be well.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Mitch, well, I've known you the longest, but have had the shortest amount of time to serve with you and alongside you, which means that I haven't picked up any of your bad habits, which I'm grateful for, so thank you. But I, you know, I'm going to keep it short, it's something you're familiar with. I got to join in this too, guys. Cut me some slack, Jesus, I have some respect. No, but Mitch, I, I am grateful for, as, as Mitch mentioned, as the, as the solo Mitch has mentioned, you really have been someone that has a really deep understanding of what the power of this office holds and the ability to really lend some leadership to areas that truly do change the way we serve our constituents throughout the city of Los Angeles. And, you know, you have just incredible insight and, and just have been a great friend, a great comedian, you know, you just have a way of helping to deliver the ability for us to do the work that we do with such great humor. And I'm going to miss that the most. So thank you very much for your longstanding friendship. I look forward to continuing that. Thank you for not beating me up too hard when I took Doug. But, you know, I, I think you might have made a twist there, there might have been a twist, I don't know who went on that. But, no, but, but no.
Does anybody want Doug?
No, but Mitch, it, it really has been, we, we work together alongside, you know, one another on supporting the North Valley YMCA. We've, we've done a lot of really wonderful things together. I am going to miss you. You are my neighbor and council member and I'm just, I'm grateful for your friendship. I'm better for knowing you and I wish you the very best in this next endeavor. Congratulations.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Very much. Mitch, it really is a, it's a pleasure to have you as a, as a friend and a colleague. We, we share a long border on the northern edge of my district, the southern edge. We're the only ones who understand the West Val, well, we've got some others who understand part of the West Valley, they're mixed up, but we've got, we've got the extreme and the commute. So we share a lot and, and, and I've appreciated that. We have that border, we, you know, you're always sending all of the homeless RVs down into my district and I always appreciate that.
We never finish that wall.
Yes. But I also appreciate what was said about your bipartisanship. I know that every time you have done a bill with someone else, you've insisted that it be bipartisan and that's been important. And as Nicole mentioned, I mean, she really did a good job on, on mentioning all the things that you've done, but you have been an innovator. I do want to, I do want to point that out. I mean, the movies, we all now do movie stuff, the neighborhood first stuff, you know, we're, we're doing that, paying sanitation the extra. Those are great ideas that we, that we pick up and we want to make sure that we recognize that, that, that you're doing them. There's some other ideas we don't pick up and that's, we don't recognize those, but we, we appreciate the fact that you do have great ideas. They say even a stop clock is right twice a day, but you're right even more than that. Anyway, no, it's, everything that's said has been, has been said by others. I, you know, I've enjoyed taking your money on poker night and I hope that that, just because you're leaving the horseshoe, that that doesn't have to change. You're actually going to have a lot more money and so playing, playing poker will be beneficial to all who play with you. Anyway, thanks so much and, you know, thank you for everything you've done.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think today is a preview of why people should attend the American Diabetes Association roast and to buy your tickets and support a very worthwhile event. You know, I want to, I just would like to add my voice expressing my gratitude and best wishes to council member Mitch Englander. Mitch, you have been an exemplary leader on this city council and on issues of public safety, from wildfires to hate crimes, you have led the charge on our city's safety even in trying and difficult times. I am going to miss working with you. Guys, I almost made it. If Nicole could say all those great things with such a straight face, I, I, I thought I could say a few lines. But, but, but in, but in all seriousness, I, I, you know, I learned a lot from you.
Oh, Mr. Rue.
No, but in all seriousness, I learned a lot from you, Mitch. You know, being, being fairly new to the council as well, you learned, you taught me to verify, 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 you know, to confirm what you're saying, I mean, what, what members are saying with what's written. Pay attention especially to last-minute amendments that are often said under your breath, I mean, under someone's breath. You know, learn the council rules. You know, learn the council rules because sometimes, you know, members claim such rules exist. So, but, no, but, but, but thank you, Mitch, you've been such a great friend. And, and, you know, I am really serious again, I miss working with you. You bring great levity to the council and to the horseshoe. I mean, your wealth of experience and you literally did memorize the council rules back and forth, probably next only to Avak. But he has a couple of years on you. But, you know, you bring, you make working on the council great and, you know, and I have no doubt we're, I'm going to see you often again and, and look forward to working with you, especially in about four years when the Greek theater contract is up. But, but, no, but it was a pleasure working with you. I know we're going to have more time with members later on at your farewell party so we could again verify that you're actually leaving. But, but, but thank you, Mitch, and thank you to, I know your family is, is going to finally have that family time with you, which is much deserved and to your incredible staff. I know you did a tremendous service to the council District 12 and to the city of LA. Thank you, Mitch.
Mr. Weether.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, Councilmember O'Farrell. We're going to miss you. For the record, you're very nicely dressed today and next to Councilmember Bonding, you came in the most often casually dressed and you look very nice this way. Let's give him a round of applause for his beautiful tie that he decided to wear on his last day. With all seriousness, Mitch, I'm certainly going to miss you. I've known you before, we were both council members, we've gone to know each other over the years and one thing I've noticed is that you truly care about the work you do and not only about your district, but about this institution, this institution we call City Council. I've spoken with you often or you've come to me with rules that you want to implement for how we function, how we, how we serve the public. And you're one of the people who have most often really tangled yourself in some of those issues that, quite honestly, other council members, we're so busy with our own districts, but you were looking out for the whole council and for the city. So I want to thank you for that. The one thing I'm going to not miss is when you were on Plum and, you know, when we have a major policy issue going on and, you know, council members come in with last-minute amendments kind of to tweak the policy here or there, but you would walk in literally to change the whole thing. And I'd have to look at you saying, Mitch, you get others to go with you, let's roll. But you, it shows that all the issues that came through Plum, not only the big ones, but everything we did on Plum, you were often and always knew the issues, had something to say, were involved and that shows that you cared a lot about the work you're doing, you cared a lot about people. One thing that struck me and I had a misperception of you for many years and you talked about how you were once homelessness, homeless. And that said a lot about who you are as a person, why you do the work you do and why you have so much compassion for others. Because therefore the grace of God, many of us could be in the same situation and that came through when you talked about that experience you had. So thank you, Mitch, for your service. Thank you for the work you've done. I'm certainly going to miss you. I know that whoever comes and sits next to my good colleague, Marquise here, I always know when you come in because things are ruffling, things are shaking, people are talking and you come in with, with something to say and something to do. So thank you, Mitch, for your service. I'm certainly going to miss you and we'll see you around. God bless you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. President, for allowing us the opportunity to toast our great colleague, Mitchell Englander. So many jokes have been told, so I'm going to skip mine. I'll skip my letter of support and gratitude to you from Sempra Energy and the other one from Black Lives Matter. They really wanted to send you their best. But I, I will, I, I want to take this opportunity to tell a story that I've never told you and I don't think I've told too many people. When I first started on the City Council, I didn't know you at all. And, you know, I frankly didn't know any Republicans in real life. I'd never seen a Republican, been up close to a Republican. So I didn't know how it was going to go. But I met you and, and you were very, very kind. And then a very, very serious moment, in the first six weeks of being on the City Council, after years and years and years of rapid declines in homicides, we had a two-week period where at least one or two people were killed by homicide in my district, Councilman Price and some in, in, in Councilmember Weston's district. And so to respond to that, we did a number of things, but one thing we did is we invited the families here to council. And we said, we're going to call the names of the people who've been killed and we're going to ring the bell for them. And we did that at the end of council. And all of the council members were great, but you stood out to me because you came up after the presentation and you talked to every one of those grandmothers, mamas, aunts, wives, little kids, and you said, I lost somebody to homicide and so I know how it is. Here's my cell phone number. Call me on a day when you're having a hard day. And I never told you this, but over a year later, I ran into one of those grandmas and she said, you know, I want you to thank your colleague because I actually called him one day and he picked up and it helped me make it through that week. And so for me, you're one of the angels that allows us to call this the city of angels. So Godspeed and good luck. Fourth with, urgent.
Mr. Cedillo.
Well, everything that could be said about short people has been said, so we'll leave that alone. So you're a Republican, huh? Jesus Christ. Haven't had as much fun since I sat next to that guy who brought a gun to the legislature. That explains Mexico. Now Jane and the whole family's like going, what? So we go to Mexico and we're part of an official delegation.
Don't make us witnesses, please do not make us witnesses.
And we're there to observe this historic election and it's huge. AMLO is one of the most progressive persons in the history of, of the country. He's recently been sworn in and the world awaits his leadership. We head out there and in a great spirit of bipartisanship, Mitch and I are headed to go pick up our delegate passes. It's a huge deal. We're going to be official observers. Everybody from around the world is there for this process. And we head out there and in the spirit of bipartisanship, Mitch has this ball cap that says M-A-G-A. I'm like, bro, what's up with the hat, man? He says, uh, what do you think? You think anybody will notice it? I said, well, if they see you, they'll notice it. So I get it now. Then, of course, there was the Arizona boycott, always brought to my attention. And then finally, as Mitch said, poor Mitch, he, he comes, I thought you were going to say, you joined the council and then you realized that there was another gay guy, you know? Just kidding. Yes.
Okay, we're going to hell, guys.
And then there was, of course, our trip to Italy. Italy was great, you know, I was in the Senate, we'd go to, go travel so we could learn so much about public policy and, and, you know, it's just, it's really great to travel as a legislator because you learn so much about how other people do things. Of course, we go to Italy and our bags don't show up. That was great. And then we get to the airport, like a group of two. Like a group of tourists, Mitch has us running all through the airport. No, it's over here. No, it's over here. No, it's upstairs. There was nothing we could do. But we ran all over that airport anyway. So, you had to be there. Trust me.
That's when I borrowed David Rue's suit, so thank you, David. I borrowed David Rue's suit that next day, cause I didn't have any clothes.
He wore David Rue's suit.
And I wore that suit and I had to go commando. I apologize, I'm letting you know now, anyway.
We're gonna turn this around, guys.
Bring it back.
Bring it back, bring it back.
This is Joe's coming home, right? In Italy.
Joel's not involved, look at him. He's just, he's like, I wasn't there, don't involve me. I had my clothes.
We're meeting with the Prime Minister. And, uh, Mitch is wearing David's suit, he looks like he's home alone. You had to be there. So, uh, Mitch, I'm gonna miss you. Uh, I really am. On the contrary, you actually show people, uh, in this country how two people from different points of views can get together, can work together, can get along. If we had that type of, uh, disposition, um, our country would be much, much greater today and a much, uh, better place. I appreciate you very much, I love you. You are a very dear friend. I was told that you and I would get along fabulously and I, I tried to figure that out when people first said that, but, um, the fact of the matter is, is that it's absolutely true. You're straightforward, uh, you're honest, uh, you have a lot of, uh, sense of integrity and a lot of respect. And you have a, a certain respect that's, uh, a deference for people's, uh, different viewpoints and values that you don't, uh, articulate. You just simply do the subtle things that let people know that, um, that you understand, that you disagree, but that you respect them. And that is just invaluable today in, in politics and in life. And, uh, if there were more like you, we'd have a much greater country. I will miss you. You're a very tolerant man. I know my staff brings me breakfast every day and I know that Joel moves over to one side and Marquise moves over to the other side and you're like, hey, what do you got there? So, uh, I miss you already. And, um, I'm gonna miss you a lot, but, uh, I'm happy for you and I'm happy for you and your family. You are, if not anything, a doting and loving husband and, um, and father. And you can see it right here at your desk. It's like a People magazine, I thought, wow. This guy cut all these pictures out of a People magazine, but it's your family and, and it's just great traveling with you, particularly, um, uh, with your family, you and your family, cause it's great to see, uh, a father and, and a, and a husband who loves his family. And, and that's, that's really, uh, your greatest gift. God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian, try to top that.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Mr. Englander comes after me? Uh, if that's the case, I assume lunch is already set in the back, you might want to order dinner. Because it, it may be a while. Mitch, Mitch does a presentation for the Vice President of the Rotary of Northridge and it takes him an hour and a half, I can only imagine what this presentation is gonna be. I've been thinking a lot about this and, in fact, I've taken a deep dive into the subject. Very deep dive, deeper dive than any council member has ever done in the history of the Los Angeles City Council. Brought together all the stakeholders, we've researched it, we've brought everybody together, we put, put together some three-ring binders of thoughts about it. But all of that, like so many of the deep dives that we've heard about around here, will go nowhere anyway, so I'm just gonna skip. So there's been a lot of talk about, uh, Mr. Englander's, uh, party status. And, um, I'm gonna actually be a little serious about this because some of us sat in the state legislature and we dealt with Republican colleagues who never once in their career took a tough vote. Never once did a thing that varied at all from the party ideology. And, uh, I know Mr. Kretz and Mr. Cedillo and certainly Mr. Weston and, and Mr. Price know that, that was a, um, it was a difficult thing to be in a place of power and influence and see people who didn't give two dams about actually using that seat for something productive. Instead, they were using it only to represent this partisan ideology. And I have to say, Mitch, that has never been the case with you. There have been times when you've taken some votes, which kind of ticked me off, I, of course. But, um, I think in a lot of respects, you've modeled what compassionate conservatism can be about. And I don't think there was ever a time when that was more, uh, readily demonstrated than in 2014, when the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission burned to the ground. And when the people who were living there, hanging on to that last rung, um, mothers with their children, were left without a home. And, um, many of us in the valley, we all, all of us from the valley sprang into action. But you really, um, were steadfast in trying to help every single one of those families. Not just in their hour of need after that fire, but in the months that followed and helping, uh, the rescue mission to bounce back. And then in pushing through your own shelter in your own district for them, 16,000 square foot facility, um, really helping, you were helping homeless people before it was popular to help homeless people. And, um, and, and you really were, uh, showing us all, I think, what compassion, uh, combined with a position like this that allows us to do something can mean. When it comes to the work that, um, we've done around gun violence in this, uh, chamber, we've set national standards with some of the legislation that we've passed. You were Chair of Public Safety. Those were hard things for you to deal with, especially as a police reserve officer and a Republican. And I readily acknowledge and recognize how difficult some of those things were, but we wouldn't have got those things done without your leadership and your willingness to engage and your willingness to really take the deep dive in figuring out, um, how we can have, have workable solutions. And then of course, where you and I have been joined at the hip, uh, since you've been here, is in fixing the city's budget. And as Vice Chair of, of the Budget and Finance Committee, um, I can't say in strong enough terms what a critical role Mitchell Englander has had in saving this city from insolvency. The work that we did over those difficult years together, um, helped us save 6,000 jobs when we were facing 6,000 layoffs. Helped us to, to really get to a point where we've built up a, a reserve that will save the city from the next downturn. That's a legacy that you can be really proud of. And then, uh, all of us who represent the valley have to also acknowledge your, um, valley nationalism. Your, um, your fierce advocacy for the people of the valley, for all of the neighborhoods of the valley, the communities of the valley, well outside of your district. And, um, never has that, I think, been stronger than when it deals with kids. And as a kid who grew up in the valley and realized, you know, how much the valley has to offer, had to offer when I was growing up, uh, as a young person there, it really means a lot to me that you spend so much of your time and energy, often outside of the limelight, as your predecessor and successor Greg Smith did as well. And I want to acknowledge him for helping to, to set you on, on that path as well. But focusing on making lives better for the young children of the San Fernando Valley. What you've done with pals, what you've done with the Y, what you've done, you know, just so many things where you have made that extra effort to be able to give the kind of upbringing that many of us enjoyed in the valley to the next generation, especially those who, um, who would be without the means to have that but for your efforts. And so I think that's really reflective of the values and character and compassion that you've brought to this job. It's no wonder you were named Father of the Year. Um, you, you show that compassion and that caring in your own family, uh, but you also have shown it to thousands and thousands of young people, many of whom may never know your name, but all of whom will have a better life in this city because of the work that you did and the legacy that you left behind. So, we'll certainly miss you around this chamber, but, um, you need to know how much of a lasting impact you've left that will be here long after, um, you've moved on. So, congratulations and best wishes, Mitch.
Amen. Well said, y'all. Well said.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, uh, say Mitch, I know that, uh, most of the really good jokes about short white Republicans have been told already. But I just, I just want to say that you're no joke. You really are the, the real thing. And, uh, sometimes, of course, you, you come up with the right answers, uh, the right questions. Unfortunately, usually they're on the far right. And so, but that, but nonetheless, we know where your heart is. And so, we just appreciate, uh, your friendship, your camaraderie, your commitment to youth, a commitment to not just your constituents, but to the city at large. Certainly your work, uh, in public safety, uh, is, speaks for itself. And I just want to let you know that, uh, in the, in the new ninth, we, we appreciate you, there's always a spot for you and we know that you're not gonna be a stranger to, to our city. We just wish you all the success to you and your family. Congratulations and just keep up the good work. Thank you Mitch.
Thank you, members. And Mr. President, I just want to take a few minutes just to say a few words, I'll make it quick. Mitch, you and I have the most in common. Uh, we're both two kids from the valley. We're both, uh, super pro-women. We're both fans of raising the minimum wage. And we're both fans of recicla. But in all honesty, I, I'm being really serious, I think we've known each other for 20-something years. We're both on opposite sides of a real famous 1998 California senate race, is when I first met you. I won that race, um, in 1998. Uh, but a couple of years later, uh, you and I both, uh, went through the Valley Leadership Program in the San Fernando Valley. And it's when I started to work closely with you and it's when I really figured that what really drove, drove you, uh, into politics and public service was your love for this valley. And I had so much respect for the things you fought for, for the things that you believed in. And the fact of the matter is that you and I have very similar stories. We've both struggled, we've both had challenges in our lives, um, and we've all, we both turned out pretty good, as far as I, as far as I can tell. Uh, but more, but honestly, um, you know, nothing was more incredibly personal to me than, um, you having my back in 2013. That even when people challenged the fact that I was never gonna be able to turn my, um, my, uh, losing primary election around and people lobbied you to drop me, people lobbied you and pressured you to be able to go with what they figured was gonna be the winner, you didn't. And you had my back. And for that, I will always be very, very grateful, my friend. Congratulations on your next chapter. To your beautiful family, your girls, you have an amazing father, uh, an amazing human being that always thinks of you and only you. And, uh, I appreciate your friendship over the years, Mitch, 20 years of growing up in this business together, cutting our teeth together in some of the most contentious political fights, um, that the valley has ever seen. And we've come out, uh, out okay, so I just want to wish you the best, um, sincerely, my friend. You've done some amazing work for the San Fernando Valley and for that, we thank you.
Wow, if I knew it was gonna be like this, I would have done what Felipe did.
Ouch.
It keeps coming.
By the way, your winning candidate in the senate was later indicted, but we won't talk about that. Um, no, I could, I could counter every one of these, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna actually cherish this. Because I hoped that if some of you, and I didn't realize all of you were gonna speak, that you would actually do so with a sense of humor, cause that's what we've always had. Uh, we're in a very difficult business each and every day and it's challenging, but it's always about helping people and doing the right thing. Serving with you, serving on the Los Angeles City Council and representing the community that I grew up in is outside of Lindsay, Lauren and Jane. The most magnificent, rewarding experience of my entire life. I want to bring them up for a sec, come on, you guys stand up here. It's also, at the same time, been, um, difficult sometimes because we sacrifice a lot for our families to serve in this capacity. When I started here, Lindsay and Lauren were as tall as I am. Lauren was four years old. She's now living in San Francisco in college. Lindsay was seven. She's now in a very successful career with her own place, living in Los Angeles. And Jane and I just recently celebrated our 25th wedding anniversary together. And so, raising a family, and I want to first talk about that, while you're in this position and many of you know, isn't always easy on the kids. Because while some of those votes, not every vote, everybody supports out there in the community, or what we're doing perhaps, oftentimes teachers and parents of their friends would let them know passionately about how they felt. And so they grew up in that, in that shadow and think about that every day with your own kids as well. It's a challenge. But they've always stood by me and they've always gotten engaged and in fact would often volunteer in all of those efforts on the weekends and after school to help out. And I'm grateful, that's the most important thing we have is our family. The work we've done here together is remarkable. These last 15 years have been incredible. We literally would be insolvent, we would have gone bankrupt and, um, had it not been for all of the work that we've done in turning the city around. And so I thank you for everything we've done together. I also want to recognize my brother who's here, Andy. And, um, and his daughter Samantha. Andy, for those of you that don't know, um, I know a lot of you know this, some of you don't, but I was legally blind as a child. And for several years, when I couldn't see, he, he was my eyes. He would hold my hand and walk me to school every day, step, step, curb, step, step, curb. Walked me into a friggin' tree once, but, um, we'll, we'll talk about that. Talk about that later. But he did, he walked me to school for years when I didn't have eyes and, uh, I love you brother, thank you for that, for everything. I, uh, I will always cherish everything we've all done together. We, if you ever have the opportunity, if anybody has the opportunity to look back in life and say, you know, we've done something to create a program, to create a policy, to volunteer in an effort, to reach out to somebody, we actually, if you can actually pinpoint your life where you've saved a life, where you've helped an individual, a stranger you don't know, somebody you've never met, and then you can actually put that same statement out there exponentially and look back and say, in fact, those programs, those efforts, that initiative, that policy, whatever it is that might be, will save hundreds, if not thousands, if not tens of thousands of lives forever? I can't do anything more than that in life. Um, and we've done that. And I won't go through all of those things, but I'm grateful that you guys have given me the support to do that. I'm also grateful for, I want just a shout out to Greg Smith. Um, he has been my mentor, not just as a city council member and as Chief of Staff, but as a role model, as a father, as a husband. and as chief of staff, but as a role model, as a father, as a husband, as a leader in the community, as an individual with integrity. The fact that he's agreed to step up again, the fact that his wife led him. I hope that you will all vote for him in January. But I thank you, Greg, for everything and making me who I am today. I will always be grateful. And lastly, my staff. By far, the best staff ever. We are much more than staff. We've become family. I got to tell you a quick little story about why they're wearing yellow. Everybody's dying to know. So I would never allow anybody in my office to wear yellow. Yellow was not allowed in the office. Mustard was not allowed in the office. Yellow pencils, not allowed in the office. It was really almost the only office rule I had. I didn't care what time you showed up to work. I didn't care what time you left. In Doug's case, I didn't even care if you actually worked. You're welcome, Monica. So it's a kind of a deep story, but it's a real one. My, our father, who'd moved out when I was five, out of the house. He left us. And one of the last things he did was he put two bicycles away on layaway for my brother and I. He never paid them off. So we ended up doing that, but we got them from Spoken Wheel, Platten Van Owen. And mine was yellow. You don't get a little boy in the Valley back then a yellow bike that you don't even pay for. And I think the day after I got it, I think it was stolen. Why I was riding it, that's another story. There's the color yellow. So I want to thank my staff for reaching deep at the heartstrings, because they all know the story. And leaving me with that. In all seriousness, my staff has become my family, my extension of my family. They've helped raise my children. They've been there in thick and thin. My staff is my in case of emergency on my contacts on my phone. My staff are listed and were listed as my kids grew up in elementary school and middle school and high school in the school's nurse's office for their in case of emergency. That's who they are to me. That goes beyond, goes beyond even family sometimes, right? That's who they are. It's the most important thing that I can say is I love them very, very much. And making this decision to leave was one of the hardest decisions of my entire life. Probably only second, probably only second to when my brother and I had to make the decision to take our sister off life support. That's how hard this was. Because I love working with these guys so much. And I love what we do. And I love working with all of you. And I will miss it very much. But I will always enjoy the personal relationships that we've developed. And I will treasure those for the rest of my life, banter and all. And I welcome that because that's what gets us through this crazy business. And so, I want to thank you. I think, I want to thank you for one other thing. You've all recognized as the only Republican on the Los Angeles City Council, or as the mayor would say, one too many. You've also, three times, back to back to back, voted unanimously to elect me into one of only two elected leadership positions on this body as the president pro temp of the city council. And I think that says it all, not about me, but about you. Not making about party, not saying, let's exclude, but let's include. And you've done it across the board, not just in party, but in race, religion, sexual orientation. You've been so open to so many, to everyone, not just around this horseshoe, but throughout the city of Los Angeles, which is what has truly been the biggest honor to work with all of you. And I'm grateful for that. I just want to say one last thing. For a council president, he's been the captain of this ship. And I truly appreciate the support that you've given me. Because make no mistake, I wouldn't have all of those committees, the trust you've given me, to sit there with you in council leadership, with Nury. Says a lot about who you are. And I will for always be grateful, the relationship. And I will miss that relationship deeply, as I miss it with all of you. I love you guys very, very, very much. I mean that. I love you guys, each and every one of you, and to our city staff. We're only as good as our staff, but the entire city staff is phenomenal, all of you. I truly appreciate this honor. And look forward to whatever those next chapters are. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Members, why don't we take a short recess so we can take a picture with Mitch? Guys, we're back on? Okay. Okay, members, let's get back. We have a couple of more items on a special meeting. Got to continue our agenda. Mr. Kocorian, did you want to say something? Okay, let's go to, I thought you wanted to say something. Okay, let's move on to item 27. Madam Clerk, I believe there's an amendment that's been circulated on item 27.
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, that, members, let's go ahead and vote on item 27 as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to item 34. Mr. Kocorian? Or Mr. Rue, I have both of you on the cue on item 34. Mr. Rue? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on item 34, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and recess our regular meeting and go into our special meeting. Can you please? Item 5, the amendment still being circulated. Okay, members, item 5 is, the amendment is now being circulated. So let's go ahead and wait on that before voting on it. Okay, members, item number 5 is now before us. There is an amendment that has just been circulated. Let's go ahead and vote on item number 5 as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's go ahead and... Okay, members, let's go ahead and recess our regular meeting and go into our special meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonn, and Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kocorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 13 members and a quorum, Madam President. Madam President, given the upcoming council recess, would counsel like all items from the special meeting to go forth with?
Yes, without objection, that will be the order once next. Members, I need to quiet down the council chambers. We're still, we're still conducting official business. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Items 53 and 54 are items which public hearing has been held. The committee report for item 53 has been circulated and submitted for council's consideration. Both items can be voted on, Madam President.
Okay, members, are there any specials on any of these two items? Okay, there are no specials, Madam Clerk. So go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
What's next?
Items 55 and 56 are items which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. And we do have cards on these items. Armando Herman, are you still here? You are speaking on items 55 and 56.
So the mere crime of dwelling in your vehicle has now become an 85.02, Mr. Circumcised City Attorney. And I find that a prevailing issue of mere words to punish the poor, those living in poverty, under section 85.02. But the Constitution is to reform that because it is an obligation of the city and the responsibility of our absent mayor to cure and correct the issue of dwelling on a public sidewalk or in a vehicle is not a violation of the Constitution, but on behalf of public interest and those of my brothers and sisters sleeping and living on the street under 42 U.S.C. 1983, fuck you, Mike Fure, and any white, pasty fucking attorney who violates civil rights of the American...
So now you're not a... Get back on the topic.
So the physical impact of my statement is to reserve and accomplish my political reform to the statute that I, the legislative body of the Ralph and Bronn...
Okay, I don't understand what agenda item you're on, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman?
Mr. Herman, please get on the agenda items. Okay, you're not on the agenda items, Mr. Herman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. You're done for the day. Goodbye, Mr. Herman. Next speaker is Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, are you still here?
So, Mr. Previn...
Mr. Herman, you've been ejected from this meeting. Goodbye. Goodbye.
So, Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting and you've been ordered to leave. Please leave. Okay.
Goodbye, Mr. Herman.
Okay, you've...
Goodbye, Mr. Herman.
You've been ordered removed, Mr. Herman. Please go.
Mr. Eric Previn, are you still here? Mr. Previn? He is... Mr. Previn?
And Mr. Herman's still shouting on the way out. As he's... And he's still shouting, keeping us from conducting our business. And still shouting.
Mr. Previn, you are speaking on items 55 and 56.
Thanks. I'll just say a word about the 85.02, which is your parking restrictions. You know, you've got a lot of plans in the upcoming year to get people. You've got the little sonar things. I saw a guy in Studio City working for Xerox. Englander, Robin Allen, were the lobbyists for that group. They're now called Conduent, I think. And they have these little ears that go right after people, and they pick them up for parking if they're in a meter. You know, the problem is that we keep adding units like crazy because Mayor Gourcetti's saying we need more, and we do with 10,000 HHS, but now it's at 0.6. You know, the problem is that we're criminalizing people who are really... Because the first place you go, if you're losing because of your rent, place to live, is to your car. So I know our NIMBYs, and we should have some NIMBY Olympics. Why don't we get some NIMBY Olympics going finally? You know, because every district has some outstanding participants. Sherman Oaks, certainly Koreatown. I mean, I think Mr. Buscagino has a team that can show some game. We are certainly as NIMBY as they get. There are all sorts of characters, but it's time for a little bit of a change. And the problem is that they... Nobody really pays attention except for the people who get nailed. People don't like to have RVs. I know some of the districts have a terrible situation where they're all over the place. But that's why I raised the questions about the safe parking program. Because safe parking, um, it's 120,000 per, you know, safe parking program. You've got several in there. But how many spaces? Because last I looked, Coetz was offering like 10 spaces. I mean, that's not going to get the job done when we have thousands of people living in their vehicles. So what can I say? I talked about it this morning with Mike Fuer while I was pointing out that item nine on the regular agenda is as corrupt as corrupt gets, Mr. Faubel, because you're self-dealing.
So why don't we get back on the agenda items, supposed to number nine, which is already voted on, Mr. Previn?
Voted on improperly and without proper notes.
Mr. Previn, please speak to the agenda items.
I'm going to speak to you, and you're in violation of the Brown Act and the law.
Previn, thank you very much. Your time is up. Antonia Ramirez, are you here? Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Ramirez is not in council chamber. Next speaker is Neil Brower. You waive your time? Okay, thank you, sir. That concludes speakers for items number 56 and 50... I'm sorry, 55 and 56. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
What's before us? What's next, Madam Clerk?
Um, Madam President, the special meeting needs to be adjourned.
Okay, let's go ahead and... Do we send in all items forthwith, is that correct?
Yes, Madam President.
Let's go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and return to our regular meeting?
Council has motions for posting and refer...
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, I have an announcement. In the last week or so, we've had a lot of, you know, mentions of staff leaving. You did, you know, Jim Dantona this week and...
Oh, we have another staff member in this?
We have another one. We have another one.
Mitchell Farrell, what is happening?
It's a total surprise, not to us, but it's a total surprise to my wonderful legislative staffer, Angelo Yanko. Angelo, where are you? Right here. So a little bit about Angelo is that, you know, there were six of us, and seven if you count Nury, who transitioned into the city council in the summer of 2013. So that means that there were seven members that either retired or went to Congress. And there were a lot of staff members that needed to land and were interested in continuing their work, either at city hall or in city council offices. Now, the late Bill Rosendahl, whom we all love and cherish. Bill called me and said, you know, it's really important that this incredibly talented staffer of mine, his name is Angelo Yanko. I'd never met Angelo, but I think it was a really good sign for me that Bill Rosendahl felt it was important that the talent on his team, who are interested in continuing, find a spot in, you know, the council offices. And so I interviewed Angelo, and he was just a rock star in the interview, and he came with a lot of successes in his short time in Bill Rosendahl's office. I think he started as an intern, and then we're on the staff. And so Angelo began as a field deputy for me when I was a brand-new council member. And he was the liaison for Historic Filipino Town, Westlake, a really large chunk of my district, some of the biggest and most active neighborhoods. And they loved him. All the constituency that he worked with, he always provided a steady, thoughtful hand, and he was incredibly responsive. And so after a couple of years, we brought him to city hall because he was interested in doing legislative work. And since he's been with us at city hall for two and a half years now, we've had some really great legislative successes. Any success that we've had legislatively, and the list is so huge, I'll spare all of you, you know, the... All the successes, but you know them. No, but in all seriousness, he's been a clutch player for my team and I. And the constituencies continue to love and respect Angelo because he is the consummate professional. And so after five and a half years with me, he's moving on to the CAO's office. So it's our loss, but the CAO's gain. And we'll continue working with Angelo. And so we just want to give him a proper send-off, even though he hates this. I know he does. But also Angelo was recently married. So we congratulate you on your wedding and your new life. And we're so excited for you with that, too. So we have just a little token of our appreciation, I think. Yep, good. So this is for Angelo Yanko. "Your dedication of heart and hand to the needs of friends, neighbors, and fellow members of our society. This certificate is a measure of your devotion of service to the people." And on behalf of the team and myself, Angelo, we so appreciate all that you've done for the 13th district and this great city. You will represent the CAO's office very well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Angelo, we wish you the very best, my friend. You've been a delight to work with. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Are there any other announcement, members? Any other announcements? See none? Can we please rise for adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions to my right? Any... Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that the city council adjourn this meeting in memory of a great community leader within the Armenian community, Dr. Kevork Keshishin, who is a longtime activist from the time of his youth, growing up in Lebanon, and right through until the very end of his life, when he passed away on November 16th here in Los Angeles. He was one of the most prominent leaders of the Armenian General Benevolent Union, the largest Armenian philanthropic organization in the world, as well as the Takayin Cultural Association. He was elected to serve on the AGBU's Central Board of Directors and was a prominent leader of the Takayin Cultural Association and the Armenian Democratic Liberal Party. And in that work, has left an indelible mark on Southern California and on the Armenian community worldwide. The organizations that he helped lead experienced rapid expansion and growth and assistance to so many people during the time of his leadership. And he helped to expand those programs throughout the United States and Canada. He was always a humble, congenial, self-effacing person who always just wanted to help other people. And at the same time, he was a terrific family man. He... His wife Cecil is, in her own right, a great leader of this community and involved in so many organizations where she makes an enormous impact to this day. And their children, Alec and Aline, are both prominent leaders within the entertainment industry. Alec Keshishin is a well-known film director and producer. And Aline is a producer and talent manager of great success and great impact within Hollywood. So he will be sorely missed by Cecil and by Alec and Aline, but also by so many friends and people that he has touched and influenced throughout his life. May Dr. Kevork Keshishin rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Coetz?
Oh, I just wanted to not adjourn in the memory, but to ask that, since Mr. Spindler has been bleeding like a goat, singing, using a variety of voices, all during the adjournment, I'd like to ask that you have him removed.
Yeah, before we adjourn this meeting, colleagues, Sergeant... Sergeants, if you can please escort Wayne out of the chambers before we adjourn this meeting one final time. All right. Thank you very much, Sergeant. Show him out. Before I adjourn this meeting, being my final act, as he's still yelling out the council meeting, my second to final act in my official capacity is throwing out Mr. Spindler in one of the most rewarding, may I add, farewell. Colleagues, we are adjourned. Be safe. Happy holidays. Thank you.